So we will open the meeting at 6:35. First, we'll start with a public service announcement again. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings. The City Council will meet today with four voting members, the City Council President, present, and one voting member via the conference call. The City Council intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing teleconferencing system. Public participation in public meetings has been revised, and the public may participate through a conference call and system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in a 48-hour notice to the Home News and Star Ledger and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows. City employees will also be available via conference call during this meeting as well as I call upon them if needed. All parties on the conference call have the opportunity to hear the City Council meeting. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted, and the council will not be able to hear any public comment through the conference call system. During the public comment period, those on the conference call in lines who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name and then called upon to speak. After all organized members of the public speak, the process will happen again until all of the public has had the opportunity to speak once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I will notify you that your time has expired. If the public in any way needs assistance accessing the call-in number, they should call City Hall at 732-745-5007. We will start with the agenda portion of our meeting. We still have the public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. We have ordinance one. An ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 1570, vacant property registration ordinance regarding to Section 157040, registration statement requirements, and Section 157120, penalties for violation of chapters. Two, ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Kansas County, Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending one of the guarantee ordinance 0101010, adopted on November 3, 2010, and two of the guarantee ordinance 0101009, adopted on November 3, 2010, to provide for the guarantee of refunding bonds. Second reading number three. An ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Traffic 1012, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 1012160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Red Light Prohibited, and in regard to Jersey Avenue and Handy Street. Four, an ordinance to adopt the Health Care and Research Pavilion Development Plan in the City of New Brunswick. Five, ordinance to amend and supplementary revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 1016040, Schedule 28, Stopping or Standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets or adding to this in road. And number six, an ordinance to provide for the submission of the voters of the City of New Brunswick, the question of a change in the city's charter to provide for a municipal council to consist of seven members deemed to have been given first reading by the city clerk's certification pursuant to NDSA 4069A19. We have no ordinances on first readings. We have resolutions. Number one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, 31420 and 32720. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve amendment of resolution R051948, a recent additional amount of $2,455 with Garden State Lavatories Incorporated, the lavatory analysis for the water department not to exceed $2,455. Five, approve amendment of resolution R032031, to pay outstanding invoices in the amount of $3,436.26 for the water utility with Univar USA incorporated, furnishing and delivering chemicals for bulk feed facilities not to exceed $3,436.26. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Six, approve requested street closing and use of city sidewalk by Middlesex County Universal Suffrage March. Location one is Hamilton Street by Voorhees Mall to George Street to Livingston Avenue, timed 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Location two, Livingston Avenue between New Street and George Street, entrance to the Helridge Hotel will be cleared, 10:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sidewalk use Livingston Avenue between New Street and George Street, Saturday, September 26, 2020, please extra duty. Number seven, approve resolution to authorize refund of Pescro to Binata Incorporated amount $6,237. Eight, authorize tax collector to prepare and issue the estimated tax bill for the third installment of 2020 taxes. Nine, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2020. Ten, approve payment for emergency procurement division of construction to demolition of 53 Remson Avenue with NAF Contractors Corporation not to exceed $27,845, purchase order number E31067. Eleven, approve payment for emergency procurement for the water utility, replacement of riser pipe in the Home News Road Tank with Allied Construction Group Incorporated not to exceed $166,000, purchase order number E28109. Twelve, approve amendment of resolution R022054, to add certification of funds to the Department of Public Works with South Electric Company for electrical maintenance and repair services, specification number 73419P, not to exceed $7,205. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Thirteen, authorize purchase by the water utility under New Jersey State approved COOP 65 NCESCCPS, the Educational Service Commission in the Jersey Pricing System from CDW Government Incorporated for five service for the water department not to exceed $25,785.75. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution R051749, to pay invoices in the amount of $57,942.60 for November and December 2019 with Horizon Blue Cross and Blue Shield in New Jersey Incorporated for dental benefits not to exceed $57,942.60. Fifteen, approve water contract with PMA Management Corporation for safety consultant and trainer for the water utility, term is a 12-month period commencing April 2, 2020 and ending April 1, 2021, specification number 81720, RFP not to exceed $9,000, fair and open. Sixteen, approve amendment of resolution R021655, the reason to pay final copier invoice of $124.32 for the Division of Purchasing with Corvus USA Incorporated not to exceed $124.32. Approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Seventeen, approve water contract with John Duffy Fuel Company to furnish and deliver diesel fuel for the Department of Public Works, 12-month period commencing April 6, 2020 and ending April 5, 2021, specification number 82323, not to exceed $68,000. Number eighteen, approve water contract to furnish deliver trees for screen tree planting program for the Parks Department with Barbado Nursery Corporation would be items A, B, C, D, E, F, K, L, M, N, O, P, and R, not to exceed $11,125, with Ocean Wholesale Nursery Incorporated for items G, H, I, J, Q, and S, not to exceed $3,499.50, specification number 83123. Nineteen, approve water contract to furnish deliver work uniforms for public works, water utility, public property, parks and shade trees, engineering library, and police department, the garage attendant, with Specialty Graphics LLC, 12-month period commencing April 2, 2020, and ending April 1, 2021, specification number 82123, not to exceed $60,774. Number twenty, approve resolution to refer amendments to the land development ordinance to the planning board for review and report in regard to site plan and fees. Twenty-one, approve resolution to refer amendments of the zoning ordinance to the planning board for review and report in regard to zoning permit fees. Twenty-two, authorize purchase by water utility under the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, NCPA, with Microsoft Corporation for nine computers not to exceed $7,631.91. Twenty-three, approve amendment of resolution R032029, reason pay the additional amount of $21,000 for the Public Works Department with BMW Construction Corporation in New Jersey for equipment and labor not to exceed $21,000. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-four, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Norde Contract Incorporated. The reason is to install two new order services for Rogerwood Johnson University Hospital, road closure Somerset Street from Hardenberg Street to Division Street, Saturdays and Sundays from April 18, 2020 to May 9, 2020, altering dates Saturdays and Sundays from May 10, 2020 to May 17, 2020, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution R061521, reason change the names of the agent for the sustainable Jersey municipal certification process. We then have items for discussion by council, we then have public comments. Again, we'll ask people who are online, please make sure that you mute your phone if you're not speaking in a public portion. All right.
Mr. Council President, before you start the formal meeting, I'd just like to verify that Councilwoman Socorah Ludwig is on the line. Councilwoman Ludwig?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. You can hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great.
All right, the meeting of the City Council of the City of New Brunswick for April 1, 2020 will begin now. We have a call to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Socorah Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here.
Okay. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, if you comply with and satisfied at the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on improper bulletin lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News. Would you speak in favor, if you can, of the pleasurable reasons?
I plead allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would remain standing for a moment of silence for our men and women who are serving in our armed forces, both here and abroad, especially those who have given up their lives, who have come home hurt. We would also take a moment of silence for our medical professionals who, in this time of crisis, have also passed away. Thank you.
Chairman, make a motion for the minutes for February 19.
Same.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorah Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
That's same.
Fully noted.
Okay, we have reports of the correspondence by the city clerk.
Council President, the correspondence that was received will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We next have ordinances on second reading. We'll have number one. An ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 1570, vacant property registration ordinance in regard to Section 1570040, registration statement requirements, Section 157120, penalties for violation of chapter. At this time, we'll start to open up the meeting to the people. As I call out the letter of your last name, basically, would you please shout out your name so that we can have it and put you on. We're going to start tonight the letter N, like in Nancy. So if anyone has N, just shout out your name. O, V, Q, R, S, T, U.
Is it Thor? Thor, S, T, R, okay.
Okay, S, T, U, V, W. Sorry.
Hold, wait. Okay, I thought you were spelling my name.
Thank you. S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, and we'll go back to A, B, C, D, E, F, G, K.
Garcia, Dan, very good to you.
Ms. Garcia. H, I, J, K, L, M.
Moore, Daniel Moore.
Daniel Moore. Okay. Again, this is on the ordinance and only on the ordinance number one that we read. All right. Is there anybody else out there that we missed?
I don't have that.
Okay, we read letter K, all right.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll start again on this ordinance, and we'll start with...
Council President, the first name is Ms. Linda Stork.
Ms. Linda.
Is this only for this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to discuss the order.
Okay, thank you. Next on the list.
The next person on the list is Ms. Garcia.
Ms. Garcia, on this ordinance.
No, I'm not interested.
Thank you. Next.
The next name will be Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Mr. Cradville.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, how are you tonight?
Okay.
So I wanted to ask, is the meeting tonight being video recorded?
Yes, it is. You hear anything on the ordinance number for now?
Okay, see, I went back and I tried to watch the video of the last meeting where this ordinance was approved on first reading, because I wanted to see the council members actually taking the vote, and was surprised, disappointed to see that there was no video made of the last meeting. Can you please hand the public information office what went wrong, who made the error that this video was not...
We'll speak to that later. We'll speak to that later. It was on audio, so hopefully you got the audio part.
Yeah, yeah, no, and as you know, Mr. President, I even asked you directly in person if you would allow me to film the meeting, because it is an important job that you have, and you aren't supposed to be subject to the public videotaping along you do these things, but you deny me that right to attend the meeting. It's a video I even offered to just put the camera in the room and leave the camera, and I'm told now that there was a malfunction of some of the city's equipment, and I just want to understand what the malfunction was and why this hearing, or this note that you took last night, was not documented on video.
Okay, anything else on the ordinance number one?
Sure. So I believe that this ordinance should not move forward on second reading, because your last meeting was held prior to the changes to the Open Public Meeting Act, and you basically held a public meeting where the public was not allowed in. And I understand that the logic and the reason that you did that, but rather than waiting for the law to change, you violated the law and moved forward with a number of ordinances and took votes that were not proper, because the public was not allowed in the room, and again, you didn't allow the press to videotape you taking the vote, and I was told by your city clerk that you would have a video of the meeting and that it would be published on the city website, like every meeting that you've had since, I guess, 2015, the last time, that one was omitted, and I think that that's a problem, and I just want to be sure that this meeting is actually going to be videoed. I understand that, you know, there's no way for people to watch this live, so today, the president's been working hard to try to get this to be broadcasted via mail on our Facebook page, and I'm just concerned that, you know, the practices that you're doing are violating the law, so I do think that this should go back to a first reading and announce that you can't have this kind of meeting or this law, that you should hold off on doing a second reading for this and all of the other ordinances that were illegally adopted at your March 18 meeting. I also would like to know a little bit about this ordinance. What ended that this does and what motivated you to approve this on first reading?
I'll have Mr. Dominguez talk about this. Mr. Dominguez, please.
Yes, certainly. Evening, Mr. Cradville, members of the council. So this ordinance changes the frequency of registration for vacant properties from annual to biannual, so every six months, as a way to sort of push on vacant and abandoned property owners to rehabilitate their properties or sell them to people who will. And additionally, the second component of the ordinance change allows us to place liens for failure to register on the properties themselves in case people try to avoid our registration process.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Cradville, if you're called this time. People that are listening, please, would you please mute your phones unless you're called on specifically to speak, because your background noise is hindering us from hearing everything. So please mute your phones, or please do not speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cradville.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just one final point I want to make on this. I'm looking at the public notice that was published. As you know, every ordinance is passed on first reading, has to be published in the paper, and the notice that was published says that the ordinance will be entered for final pass.
Excuse me. People?
City Council, City Hall, Council chambers.
Stand up.
Por favor, las personas que tienen el teléfono y están esperando a ser escuchadas tienen que poner su teléfono en modo para no poder oírlos. Estamos allá en la tarde, no podemos seguir conduciendo en el tránsito, escuchando el ruido que proviene de sus llamadas.
Thank you, council. Okay, Mr. Cradville.
Yes, so this notice says that the ordinance will be considered at the City Hall meeting in Jersey, at a meeting at 7:30 p.m. on April 1, or at any time and place to which such meeting may be adjourned. And so can you ask your council, is that allowed for you to publish a notice that says, you know, one date, time, location for the meeting, but to, you know, then change the meeting location to a telephone meeting after the fact? Is that legal? Does that notice hold up for this ordinance, or has this not been properly noticed to be heard?
All right, thank you, Mr. Cradville. The time of the gentleman has expired. We think...
I'd like the attorney to answer the question, that's all.
Mr. Cradville, it's not on happy answer the question, Mr. Council President, members of council. This notice is entirely legally within the confines of the Open Public Meetings Act. It's perfectly acceptable for the notice to be that way, and quite frankly, there's no legal requirement that meetings are videotaped, as Mr. Cradville suggests. And additionally, the last meeting that was held by this council telephonically, with all involvement of the public, any member of the public who desired to speak was available through teleconferencing. That procedure, that process met the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Since our last meeting, there's been some directives from DCA, local government services, which again says that meetings can be conducted in this fashion. So it's my legal opinion, Mr. Council President, members of council, this meeting is being conducted entirely legally within the confines of the Open Public Meetings Act, as well as the notices that were published relative to these ordinances on second reading. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, was there anybody else on the list there?
Yes, Daniel Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Yes, Council President, Daniel Moore.
Hi, yes, now you said this was a basis on vacant buildings that have vacant things? Maybe is vacant buildings making people move in faster?
No, no, this is a whole different idea, totally vacant, no people living there, basically. So it's a whole different thing.
Well, this way, at some time, it was where I thought within the next three months that any vacant area or anything with locations were to be left alone.
Yeah, that's a different one. This is for the vacant properties that we've already had under vacancies basically going on.
But as of now, nothing is to be done.
Well, this has to do with things we did before. It doesn't put anybody out of their place. I don't believe there's any people in these buildings whatsoever or anything like that.
It doesn't sound like you're doing this meaningful to me. It's like Mr. Cradville said, this speaks to where I think we need to follow up on this, but like I said, it's so sound to me like, wow, no, we're not being said anything regarding to things like this did not improve.
Well, he's hoping, he's talking to banks and everything, and not that he has the authority to do that, but we're talking about banks. But these are vacant buildings that have been vacant for a while, so this doesn't have to do with really people.
Mr. Dominguez, can you, it was again, it's already, so people will understand that one thing doesn't have to do with another, just a brief explanation of the process.
So just for clarity's sake, the city has been registering vacant properties that are fully vacant, and in some cases, in almost all cases, very dilapidated, in some cases behind on taxes and other items, but there have been no tenants or residents of these buildings for years, if not at least months, if not years, and they have to pay a registration to the city, and we have people who go and check to verify that the buildings are secured and that are being rehabilitated or are being saved off from getting worse than they are. So this has nothing to do with, you know, eviction moratorium or foreclosure moratorium, so I think that that's the confusion here, Ms. Moore.
Okay.
Yes, so that's all that it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I understand, okay, what you who says it means like, okay, we can take any vacant buildings out.
Mr. Dominguez.
No, Ms. Moore, so these changes are simply for more frequent registration of the properties to sort of incentivize the property owners of these properties to fix them up or give them to someone who will fix it up. That's all that this is for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the list?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I'd like to speak, please, Elizabeth C. O. A. E.
All right, spell that again, please.
B-I-C-O-A-E, is this the company?
Okay, Ms. C, go ahead.
In regard to what gentleman who was just speaking said, if you're going to require the property owners to register twice a year instead of once a year, does that mean they're paying double the fees?
Yes, it's coming to that.
So you're going to collect double the fees you've been collecting all along, simply by doubling the number of restrictions you have to make per year?
Correct.
What are you going to do with the money?
I'm sure it goes into city coffers. Mr. Dominguez?
Certainly.
I'm sure you're down on this, it is.
Mr. Dominguez does.
These funds are used to offset the costs of our vacant and abandoned property coordinator, Ms. Elaine Broyles, who goes around town ensuring that these properties are secure, that offsets the costs of the police who have to go and deal with squatters and ensure that the properties are secure and that there are real activities occurring on these premises, which occur very frequently, as well as any time that the fire department needs to come in, secure occasionally for the demolition of certain properties, such as the, you'll see on the resolutions, that there is 53 Remson Avenue, which is one of the properties that falls under this umbrella, and we had to demolish that property, and so those costs are for that, and the negative costs of these properties far exceed anything that we recover in these fees, and this is just to offset the costs of the city as much as we possibly can.
I mean, you're talking about recovering the costs, when in fact, you're paying all these people already, but suddenly now you're going to go with the number of times they have to register and the number of fees you'll collect. You're already paying this, you're already paying the fire department. It has nothing to do with these vacant buildings.
The police and the...
They don't stand regardless, yet you're doubling the fees, making some happen the attitude that you're going to cover some of those people's costs, but you are paying them on the top of the money, this first place.
Ma'am, the police and fire have much more important things to do than enforce our vacant properties, and the fact that we have to is a massive burden on them. It probably increases their budget for supplies and the amount of staff that we have to hire for police and fire, and so there are a million hidden costs associated with this, and we are in desperate need to ensure that we are covering the costs to the city for the taxpayers and ensuring that people who are having and owning delinquent and negligent properties that are hurting the rest of the city are paying their fair share to ensure that we can take care of it.
Nevertheless, if you're asking, there was a $14 million search was, so I'm not ... Nonetheless, Mr. Crowe, you said there was a $14 million surplus, so I'm not sure whether to venture for these fees when it was $14 million surplus.
I'm not sure I remember anything about a $14 million surplus. Anything else, Mr. Crowe?
It was the same guy from the last meeting, just that, I believe that was the planning board meeting.
Oh, I don't know what happened at the planning board meeting and Mr. Dominguez doesn't remember at this point in time.
Of that being on your computer. Thanks for having me.
Anyone else? Okay, all right.
Move the ordinance.
Say.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor Lewick. Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading, number two. Orders of the City of New Brunswick and the County of Billsex, State of New Jersey, amending one guarantee ordinance O-101010, adopted on November 3rd, 2010, and two guarantee ordinance 0101009, adopted on November 3rd, 2010, to provide for the guarantee of refunding bonds. Once again, if members from the public would like to speak, please just shout out your name as I call the last letter of your name at that time, please. Again, we're starting with letter N. O. P. Q. R. S. T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. A. B. C. D. E. F. G. H. I. J. K. L. M. Anybody? Last chance.
Move the ordinance.
Charlie Crowe, geez, sorry, Charlie, would like to speak on this one.
Okay, my apologies for the people. Again, if you could just give your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
My turn?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie Crowe, I would like to answer the second ward and if people want to send email, like we said, it's PO Box 3180, New Brunswick, New Jersey, 0893. I do want to ask about the amended notice for this meeting, but first, when was this agenda made public for this meeting? When was this on the way? Is it a city clerk bill?
Friday afternoon, last Friday.
Friday afternoon. Thank you. And when was the amended notice filed?
What do you mean?
Forty-eight hour notice that tells people where it's going?
It was transmitted to the newspapers prior to the forty-eight hour window and it was actually in Tuesday's newspaper. It was published as well.
Okay. Thank you.
It was...
I'll just clear into point that I believe the initial vote ordinance was illegal. Mr. Shammy's remarks notwithstanding, the Public Meeting Act was changed after your meeting on the eighteenth. It wasn't just guidance or, you know, an affirmation that it was okay to do this. It was literally a change in the statute. So on the night of the eighteenth, it was illegal for the city council to, you know, hold a public meeting but deny the public the right to attend or film at the meeting. And again, I did ask to be able to film and broadcast the meeting and you served, Mr. President, with all due respect, you denied me that right. And I will point out that I'm looking at some correspondence with the city clerk and she confirmed for me that there were a number of people physically present in the room. So of course, the TDT gave guidance on the sixteenth that all events with ten or more people should be canceled, but I'm looking at a list of twelve people or more that were at City Hall that night, effectively in the room supposedly. And also Mr. Willis and Mr. Jones, who entered when called upon the room. So you didn't exactly follow the TDT's guidance to move forward with your meeting instead of canceling it like the TDT would have wanted you to. And only after you held the meeting, held the votes, did the Public Meeting Act get changed to allow for this type of meeting where the public can only comment by telephone. I think it's absurd to suggest that this would have been legal prior to those changes to the law. So just respectfully, this ordinance has not had a proper first reading and I would suggest that it should be, you know, put down for first reading, but not second reading. Can I also get some information about the guarantee and these bonds? What exactly, what project is this for? What is the purpose of this ordinance?
Well, first of all, I'll address that supposedly as you indicated, the people in the room here or in that last meeting, were not only in the room, they were in other rooms within City Hall. So and all of us are at least six feet away from everybody else. So that's not, as Mr. Shammy indicated, we have his law degree hanging up there, we believe him and he is right, so we'll just agree to disagree. As far as what it is about... Who? Mr. Pettis?
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, members of the council. I don't know if Chris Power is on the phone with regards to these projects that he's following for, but I would have to say it would be my guess that this is for the, the project that the ordinance has been given, the timeframe when these ordinances were initially done. I point out to Mr. Crowe that he well knows that the city does guarantee the parking authority law. And what we are doing here, which really was just an oversight maybe when the guarantee was done in 2010, what we're doing here is allowing for the refunding of these bonds to save the money, similar to refinancing a mortgage, what we're doing is refunding these bonds to try to save some money on the debt service. When we started out with this process, this was a very different market, obviously, than there is today. And the market was leaning towards the good nine percent savings in the interest rate of overall debt service that was going to be, have to be paid on these bonds, so they remaining life of the two bond players here. The one theory is a theory A, 2010, and the other is a theory E, 2010. Obviously, the market has changed significantly as everybody's kind of aware. And the statute does not allow us to proceed with this refunding unless there's a fee of three percent savings, which changes day to date. So we would not do anything on these bonds or the parking authority would not do anything on some of these bonds because it's their bond. But the guarantee goes along with these new bonds that follows the old bonds that we have. Hopefully, that explains to the satisfaction of your question with the president.
Okay, thank you. The time has expired.
Just what is the number of total debts that the parking authority holds? What is the number?
Is there anybody else on that list?
How much overall debt?
I'm not sure. I have a number off the top of my head.
He doesn't have it off the top of his head.
This counter, this counter. I don't have the exact number clearly, but I know you bear that that more is the parking authority, so it hasn't changed since, I guess, last year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Wait, the word is eighty-five million.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, please. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else with that on this? Okay?
No, sir.
All right.
Move the ordinance.
Say.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor Lewick. Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading, number three. An ordinance to amend supplementary laws of the city of New Brunswick titled 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1012, Traffic Control Regulation, Section 1012, 160, Schedule 18, Right Turn on Red Light Prohibited. This is in regard to Jersey Avenue at Handy Street. If you'd like to talk about this ordinance, please shout out your name when I call the last letter of your last name. N. O. P. Q. R. S. T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. A. B. C. D. E. Name?
D. Z. Coney.
Okay, thank you, Miss Coney. Thank you. D. E. F. Someone there?
Danielle Moore.
C. D. E. F. G. H. I. J. K. L.
Charlie Crowe.
Charlie Crowe. L. M. Ms. Moore.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else we missed? Okay, first on...
C. 3, or C. 3?
Yes, this is just on ordinance three. The first name up is...
Council President, the first name is Ms. E. Saqom.
Okay. Ms. Lisbon? Ms. Z. Coney.
Okay, just tell me here, just asking about something in regards to the corner of Handy Street, that Jersey Ave. Is that on the... Where is that a location to either 50 Jersey Ave or 131 Jersey Ave, the site for the upcoming new school?
No, it's at the traffic light at Handy and Jersey Avenue. Like right in front of the...
Walgreens?
The Walgreens.
One block. And where is that in relation to Jersey Ave?
Two blocks away. It's about two blocks away, I guess.
Is anything taken to this ordinance in a peremptory action towards allowing for the production of the school building?
No, it has nothing to do with that. I believe it was brought up to, even Ms. Moore, a long time ago, when she asked us to look into it, we did it because it's a county road. Because it's a county road and so we talked to them and everything and got the approval to be able to do this.
And to allow for this turn or... It's allowed here.
It's prohibited, you cannot turn. There was some concern about people getting hit there and not paying attention. It prohibits the right turn on red from Jersey Avenue to right on Handy Street.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the list is...
Council President, the next person on the list is Mr. Charlie Crowe.
Mr. Crowe.
Do you have any specific, I just, you know, briefly, very, very, my concerns about these ordinances that were passed on first reading at a properly held meeting and I think the last speaker answered my question, but I do want to know, you know, is it all right turned? Like, so if you're coming down Jersey, will you still be allowed to make a right turn on Jersey Avenue or just only for people coming from Handy? Maybe this is what I would know?
No, basically, it's in front of Walgreens, it's coming down Jersey Avenue, you are prohibited from making a right-hand turn on red onto Handy Street. Just that one area.
Got you. Okay. So you can still make a right on red if you're coming from Handy and trying to turn on the Jersey toward trench.
Right, that little spot right there, I believe is okay.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. It's something in the spirit of the like the storage to, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, again, we'd ask people to mute their phones if they're not called on to speak. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Ms. Danielle Moore, you're up.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. I would like to thank you to the city and to the county for letting, putting no turn on red, just to where how the lights go red, where the pedestrians have the right to walk across, the cars do not stop and on the, so pedestrians walk through. I have provided the city and the county with evidence to where too many people were getting close to me and hit my car there. And it was a very dangerous location, so I do thank you for putting, following no turn on red because it was facing about pedestrians. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else on the list?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay, anybody?
Move the ordinance.
Say.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socor Lewick. Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinance on second reading, number four. An ordinance to adopt a health care and research pavilion redevelopment plan in the city of New Brunswick. Any member from the public would like to speak on this, please shout out your name as I go through the alphabet. It's your last name, please. And I'd ask anybody else who's on the phone, please mute their phones just in case you're coughing or snoring or anything like that. All right, letters N. O. P. Q. R. S. T.
Oh, perfect.
Ms. Linda, okay. S. T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. A. B. C. D. E.
Z. Coney.
Ms. Z. Coney. E. F. G.
Z. Coney, is this Z. Coney?
Yes, I use Z. Coney. E. F. G. H. I. J. K. L. M.
L. Uh, Lechere. Can you hear Lechere?
You got it. All right, not Mr. Crowe, the lady, please spell your last name.
Lechere. Lechere.
Lechere? Is that Lechere?
Um, okay, Lechere.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Crowe, okay, thank you. Anyone else that we missed?
Moore.
Ms. Moore. And Garcia. Okay, if you haven't...
You cut out for a little bit. That's fine.
Okay, I think we have everybody now. Again, if you haven't given your...
More is reading aloud and it is interfering with the conduct of the council business.
Yes, again, we'll ask people to pay attention and please mute their phones if they're not called on to speak. And if it sounds like someone might be snoring, maybe with someone or something, so if they could just nudge him, please, or her, whoever it might be. Again, all background noise, again, if you're not called upon, would you just please mute your phone at that time? It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Council President, the first person's name on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Ms. Linda, you're up.
Hi, yes, I think you guys know by now, I think this is a terrible idea. I don't think it was, now I don't think the community will be affected, was, was postponed and I really don't understand what it's your citizens on moving to that place where the school is. Like, I think that other, all territories were not even, you know, explored. I know of several all territories, several offers, and there was no willingness to look at anything else at all, just assuming that this would go through, was the community ones that are not. And I think, you know, at the city council, you need to look at the, at the whole city, the good of the whole city, including the schoolchildren. This will be really disruptive and especially now that everything is so up in the air and, you know, Rockwood is busy, right? We still do other things and there's so much uncertainty, I really don't see how it's just like charged forward with this kind of a plan. It seems like a recipe for disaster to me. Let, let the kids return to their school in the fall and look at the options. It doesn't have to be like this, but I'm finding out going way back, it was always assumed this was going to be like this, which is disturbing to me. You know, I talked to a nurse who was told this years ago when she came to work at the hospital, she gets to work in the big cancer center across the street. And, yeah, no, that's not the way it's supposed to be. You know, the city's supposed to make a plan, the planning board did narrowly recommend it, but there was, there was some opposition there too. There was something about it and, and really, really, we should just really look at this again and I would appreciate it if you would not go ahead and, and take the more time with this and take the community into consideration.
I have a few prior years working as an engineer in the industry and in response to this COVID crisis, I've been called out to perform invasive ventilator design and work even with the Robert Wood Johnson hospital systems to get them access to EPE and ventilators. So I'm pretty familiar with the crisis that's going on at RWJ. But I did want to talk about this site at 131 Jersey Avenue. Can you please tell me, I don't want to repeat myself, what is your understanding of the contamination level at 131 Jersey Avenue?
It's not very good.
It's not very good?
Because the contamination is not, it's there and it needs to be remediated before anything takes place, if indeed that's what the Board of Education chooses as its site.
Right, yes. So, they're aware of the contamination level? I just wanted to explain a little bit about what I anticipate that remediation strategy to look like. But as you probably know, the major concern is the contamination at 131. It's the risk of neighborhood intrusion. That's the process by which chemicals in the polluted groundwater can migrate to the indoor air above such a contaminated site. Then they get through cracks in the foundation, that's between the foundation corner and then the wall, or even through utility cameras to the building. And the reason this is so problematic is because what DESCO is legally required to do as a remediation strategy is what we call a preemptive remedy. So that means they're only legally required to cap this site and put in some engineering controls to help mitigate that neighborhood intrusion risk. But the problem with that is that this type of preemptive remedy comes along with extremely frequent investigations and rather expensive maintenance, you know, maintenance and engineering strategy. So not only does it pose a substantial health risk to the students, but it will also pose financial and legal burdens to the whole district because of the year's economy. So in my opinion, it was highly irresponsible for DESCO and RWJ to propose this contamination in spite, given that the neighborhood intrusion risk is outlook information. You know, they could have submitted an open request, like all of us did. Likewise, we understand that the site at 50 Jersey Avenue is highly contaminated. Just walking around the outskirts of that property, you can see at least two to three monitoring levels indicating that groundwater is highly contaminated there as well. And we know that many of the contaminants present at 131 Jersey Avenue are carcinogenic. So I'm a little bit confused why anyone would want to go forward with this proposal, given that the two proposed sites are, you know, highly toxic. It just seems completely irresponsible to me. Likewise, having worked with all of these ICU doctors, um, today I've met with a doctor who represents 150 ICU's in this area. I know exactly how overburdened RWJ is at this time. So I can't imagine, I don't think being in any position, even in this, you know, busy duration of this year, to dedicate any serious efforts into coming up with a good, you know, one and four, extending the hospital or working with these students. So I just wanted to put all of these considerations out there and hope that you will acknowledge that this plan is irresponsible and push it off at least until the end of this COVID crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our list?
That would be Mr. Crowderville, sir.
Mr. Crowderville, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Charlie Crowderville, New Brunswick, Brooklyn today. I want to second everything that Mr. Chant just said. I think that, you know, well, how about I ask you the council before you take the vote, has anyone on the council confirmed that Robert Wood Johnson is still good to go to honor their end of the bargain since this crisis started? Have they checked with them to see if they're still ready to deliver on the funding of school and delivering on the Cancer Institute?
I think basically we're just passing the, to adopt this idea of healthcare and research pavilion redevelopment is a possibility.
Well, it's a very clear yes or no question. Has any member of the council confirmed that Robert Wood is still good to go for their end of the bargain to honor that?
As I indicated, the ordinance is basically for the healthcare and research development, could be, you know, from the hospital or anybody else.
So the answer, the answer sounds like a no. And I think it's very irresponsible to move forward then without confirming that. Because a lot of people's worlds got turned upside down over the past month, including everybody in that hospital. And I think that it's absurd to not check in with them and get a clear confirmation on what they can and can't do and what timeline they can do it on. Things are changing very rapidly and it would be irresponsible to move forward with this. I'm looking at your resolution half back in February, R-022056. And this is the one where you had two parts to it. One was the planning board going to evaluate what to do at Lincoln Annex Site. And the other was the planning board supposed to evaluate the plan for the replacement of changing the zoning on Jersey Avenue. For some reason, somehow, some way, the planning board was allowed to disregard the half of your resolution that had to do with building a new school. And they went ahead on the part about destroying the current tool. So you're moving ahead tonight if you vote for this. You're going to move forward with the destruction of a good, one of our best performing public tools, one of the first future ready tools in Brooklyn. You're looking to demolish that without a real plan to replace it. They were supposed to be paired together and somehow they got separated. And you're voting, you're putting the cart before the horse. You're going to go to destroy the school before you have the plan. You can't even tell me where this rule is going to be. You can't tell me what contaminants are there. This is absurd. This is backwards. This is upside down. And I do want to just give anyone a chance to tell us, who was on the secret committee that the superintendent started to decide between the two contaminated sites to build the school?
I don't know. I don't know. It's not part of it.
So you don't even know who's going to decide what location a school might be built in. This is absolutely reckless. This is insane. You know, there's a good reason that committees like this are not a secret. We're supposed to know who's making decisions, who our representatives are. And what the superintendent has done is acted as if he is working for DESCO. He's behaving as if he is Chris Palladino or some of these other folks who have been irresponsible. You just voted before this one on guarantee of the bond for a miserable failure in the Fresh Grocer Supermarket, where we now are in debt $385 million. That's how much the parking authority owes. And a big chunk of that is because of that failed supermarket. This debt, they're the crown jewels of DESCO's work when they were going to get up to supermarkets. It failed twice. They just had to auction off all the equipment and they barely got, you know, chump change for that equipment. And we're like holding the bag. And these are the people that we're going to bend over backwards to the cart before the horse and just give that frigging school? This is absurd. I really have my wit's end with you guys because you're not using basic logic or even listening to the points we're making. You are just ramming this through in a time of crisis. And that is really the most sick and disgusting part of it, is that you have the board of ed, if you vote to approve this, you're abusing the crisis. You're using the crisis without doing the proper homework, without checking the proper rules, without visiting the community, without doing your homework on what contaminants are at these sites, or even who's on the committee to decide it. And you're ramming this through during a time of crisis. That is inexcusable, unacceptable, unforgivable, quite frankly. And I just would ask that the council members just look in your hearts for a moment and think about, you know, how do you want to be remembered by history? Do you want to be remembered by the people who used this national crisis, the most domestic crisis of our lifetimes?
Thank you, Mr. Crowderville. We have time for the gentleman to expire. Is there anybody else on the list?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Ms. Moore, it's your turn.
Hi, Ms. Danielle Moore, 333 Somerset Street. First, I'd like to say today is April 3rd. Why are you continuing voting on this where it was on live TV, Channel 12 News, Channel 7, all news channels, stating the president's protest for DESCO, stating that a board of education will not have to make a decision until November? Or why are you urged to do this when he said until November on live TV?
Well, it's an ordinance.
Answer it.
It's just an ordinance, Ms. Moore, for the healthcare and research pavilion for redevelopment there if necessary.
I tell you, one thing I'm seeing and I'm feeling, feeling from the bottom of my heart, this is all about money. But it seems like everyone who's connected to Kyo would be taking something out of this. We don't know that Kyo has gotten plenty of grants of money from this company. And I tell you, due to where even at the planning board meeting, like I said, wow, all these three people that voted were the people who were connected to Kyo. Due to where the other ones did not, they said no, they did not put a ticket in. And see, at the board of education over the phone, has anyone heard from Rutgers, the Rutgers residents online, or the board of education telling you saying, wow, there might be no need to go to the bureau anymore? Has anyone heard from Rutgers?
No, I haven't. I'm not sure whether anybody else has either. They certainly can have their opinions too and inform the city of their...
What they do is welcome this change without paying their mind. They're using all this with Rutgers and doing what they're doing, putting kids in danger where they said they may not even go to them anymore. And I wrote, one thing I know I can't do it, I always provide evidence, go, wow, the day that I was at the book page, those figures over there behind Jersey Avenue, I had a pair of shoes on. I would like to show you I wore those shoes wearing one time. The two, what the young lady engineer who worked in the workplace, called the tenths of eight of my sneakers. That's how from pantymoons it is over there. And wow, anytime I will put them in a bag, go right into the city without the stain, the chemicals ain't of my sneakers. And you're still talking about putting a school over there?
Well, the board of ed is, and I'm sure that before they do that, they would have to take care of anything that's there, if that is what they do.
Is Mr. Johnson there?
What, what do you need?
Is Mr. Johnson in the meeting?
He's not right here, so I don't know if he's on the phone or not. He might be, but what do you need?
Because due to where, how he told me that my son, what made the young lady, he said $55 million was not included with cleaning up over there. So you have writing on the letter from DESCO saying that they're going to clean up Jersey Avenue from 131 down to 50th Street?
I don't know about that, but I imagine the Department of Environmental Protection would have something to say about...
See, that's the thing with Mr. Jones, he always likes to get the last word. Due to where, when he sees that somebody provides evidence, somebody's providing, providing both evidence, tell him he has to make the last words and say something, oh, DESCO is going to clean it all up. What is the change of words?
Okay, anything else?
That's the thing, no evidence or words. Do you believe that, do you believe the city with some of the workers saying, hey, this is going to get done, and the rest of the city gets done?
Okay, anything else?
So please, I gotta say, I do hope somebody's only looking at this, just imagine you do for the purpose, like I said, I think it's going to provide money. Due to where, what, are, can you get some of the money or not?
Well, I know I'm not, so...
But it's not possible.
Anything else?
As of yet, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Council President, here are our members of the public.
Okay.
Can I add a quick question? Mr. Dominguez, if there's any accuracy to the statement that they're saying that Rutgers will afford, that DESCO is going to do this, do you have any information related to that that you could provide us? Have you heard of this?
I have no, I have not heard of any of the things that they said about the November thing or any of those other items. This is news to me. It's true. I've never heard anything like that.
Thank you. Move your ordnance.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President, Sikor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, we have ordinances on second reading, number five. In order?
Hang on, you.
We can continue on with or without certain members of the public. Please hold your comments. We have number five. An ordinance to amend and supplement revise our marches of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles Traffic, Chapter 1016 Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 101640, Schedule 28 Stopping or Standing, prohibited during certain hours on certain streets, adding Tunisian Road. If there's any member from the public would like to speak on that ordinance, please shout out your last name when I give the last, the first
Charlie Crowderville.
drops the Crowderville. K-L-M. Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Crowderville, you're up.
Yeah, just, yeah, for the record, this is the first reading, not second reading, on account of the illegal vote held on March 18th. Can you tell me the purpose of this ordinance and, you know, what's being changed and why?
Is Mr. Valenti there?
Yes, I am.
Could you please answer that?
Yes, this is for respect and affection of Tunisian Road, directly from the Woodrow School. Currently, there is no parking in that area. However, some vehicles like Toyota and Waze have still blocked the road. So we're adding, we're just adding, no stopping and standing in addition to the existing no parking.
Thank you. Clear, Mr. Crowderville? Mr. Crowderville?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move your ordnance.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President, Sikor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinance on second reading, number six. An ordinance to revise the submission to the voters of the City of New Brunswick, the question of a change in the city charter. Provide for a municipal council consisting of seven members deemed to have been given first reading by the city park certification pursuant to NJS SA 4069A-190. If anybody from the public would like to comment on that, please shout out your name as I call
But I, sorry, Charlie Crowderville.
And Danielle Moore.
Okay, Mr. Crowderville, then Ms. Moore, anybody else? Okay, we'll start that. Mr. Crowderville then?
Thank you, sir. So Charlie Crowderville, New Brunswick, Brooklyn today. Do you, to you, sir, or the other council members, support this change to the form of government?
Well, I certainly support giving it to the people to decide.
Okay. Can maybe, can any of the council tell us if they sign the petition?
They want? Anybody?
I have not.
I don't know. I don't think I did.
Mr. Egan says he did not. Mr. Escobar says he did not. Mr. Fleming thinks he did.
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe I did. I know, not president.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I, I understand Mr. Fleming supported this type of a change to the form of government eleven years ago, I mean, ten and a half years ago. Is there any reason why Mr. Fleming didn't follow through on his wishes to change the form of government from eleven years ago and this is now being done at this time?
He has no comment at this time.
Okay. Maybe you could ask Mr. Jones, if he's on the call, why he and the rest of the mayor's machine decided to, you know, gather signatures and put this question to voters this year?
I guess they thought it was time. Would you want to comment on that?
I think so.
Guess they were thinking about it and deciding that maybe this is the way to go.
Well, one with the two, and that's what happened. But I'm just curious why this year. And, you know, obviously, the folks that are backing this petition are all close allies of the mayor. I know Mr. Jones is the chief of staff to the mayor, and so I'd just like to hear from him why he supports this and why he's putting it to the voters this year.
Well, I'm not going to go around everybody the department has or chiefs of staff or whatever and ask them if they like it or not or whatever. So, anything else, Mr. Crowderville?
Well, Mr. Jones is a member of the Committee of Petitioners. There's five people who put their name on every copy of the petition. That's certainly, Mr. Jones is one of them. So since he is, you know, the mayor's chief of staff and it is a proposal to change the form of government, I would think that we would all take great interest in why this is being put forward and what the change might mean. And I'd just like to give him a chance to say in the knowledges why he's supporting this change. Does he have anything to say? Is he on the call?
I don't know. Mr. Jones, do you want to say anything?
Is he on the phone?
He's not answering. I don't think he's on the phone. Never forgot.
Okay. Well, surely it has nothing to do with the fact that another group of citizens were circulating our own petition to have a different change in the form of government. I'm sure it's just a coincidence that this came up now. But I do, you know, I'll just judge it on the, on the proposal, so I can hear from the people backing it, as to why, why they want to change our form of government in this way. And ultimately, I'll remain open minded about it, but I would like to hear from them one way or another. So I'll conclude my remarks there and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, it is your turn. Ms. Moore?
Hi, yes. Actually, I'm a little vague on this information. Could you just tell me what this is about, please?
Basically, the idea is change the five member of city council to seven members.
And so, what, the public can have to, will have a right to vote on it? That would be, right?
Correct. It would be on the ballot.
And, and wow, one comment I'm sure is supposed to say, like I said, for the truth he can't be. Why every time something important comes up for reading, for Mr. Jones to be around, due to where he's the one with all the mouth, oh, no, that's not going to happen, due to where, why he's ever there, simply speaks up to answer the questions?
Okay, anything else, Ms. Moore?
Because, yes, the questions are really for Mr. Jones now that he's in the office with the mayor, where, yes, he should be there to be, be the one where, what, he's trying to continue looking good, what, where he must have failed the pressure on him, where he's never around to answer any questions. That he's the one to be answering the questions for this ordinance.
Okay, if you'd like to give him a call, call him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. Is there any motion to...
No motion.
There is no motion on this ordinance. Mr. Shammy?
If the council is not inclined to make a motion to deny it or accept it or reject it, statutorily, this ordinance would be placed on the ballot and would be decided by the voters at the election in the future.
Thank you. Okay. We have resolutions, one through twenty-five. Any member from the public would like to talk about any of the resolutions, please call out and I call the last letter of your name. Again, these are resolutions one through twenty-five.
Charlie Crowderville.
K-L-M.
Danielle Moore.
Okay. Ms. Moore, I think it's two, remember two people. Mr. Crowderville, you're up on the resolutions.
Thank you, sir. Number thirteen on page three, is some servers for the water utility. I think they're also buying a bunch of computers. Can you tell me what they need the servers for, what it's for, these purposes about?
Mr. Wallace, are you there?
Yes.
Could you answer that?
The servers and computers are replaced with, uh, data system.
Did you get that?
Really? Okay.
Okay.
I thought that was replaced, uh, three, five years ago, that time is on break again?
Yeah, they're now over five years old. These, uh, these computers and servers run 24 hours a day and are beginning to show, you know, the signs where.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Moving on, I see the resolutions here, twenty and twenty-one are for zoning fees and site plan fees. Can you just clarify, uh, the changes, are they increases?
May I have Mr. Dominguez speak to that? Mr. Dominguez, please.
Certainly. So with regard to number twenty, what we're doing is there's going to be, we're proposing a change for, okay, so the changes would be, number one, that any parking lots under 10,000 square feet would be able to be approved by a minor site plan rather than needing a full site plan, presuming that there are no variances or any other extenuating circumstances. There would be an increase on minor site plan exemptions for accessory structures up to 160 square feet, where the limit is now eight by 10. There would be an application fee if a, if an applicant would be seeking a waiver of a site plan in an application. And if an applicant were to seek a special meeting from one of our boards, they would also now have to pay a fee for that. Additionally, for number twenty-one, that one's just a change in the cost of the review for a driveway, a residential driveway from a $25 review to a $50 review as for administrators on the grounds.
Thank you. So on number twenty, what was the figure for the parking lot less than how, how many?
10,000 square feet.
Oh, 10,000 square feet, okay. And, you know, why, I mean, why are we making it easier for people to, to build parking lots without going through this process?
Well, well, Mr. Crowderville, it's not necessarily for building parking lots per se, as you may know, that parking lots and parking structures are almost completely prohibited throughout the, through all of our zones. But this is so if someone puts, say hypothetically, you know, you have an industrial facility or a church and they want to redesign the circulation of their driveway, and it fits that criteria that they can come in for a minor site plan rather than a full site plan, assuming they have no variances or other issues.
Gotcha. Thank you. I do want to ask about the final two resolutions, the water service for Robert Wood Johnson. Can you tell me a little bit about what causes this? Does this have anything to do with the Lincoln Annex Team? Or, you know, why, why these two water services are being looked at?
Mr. Valenti, do you have any answer to that?
Yes, I guess. There are two existing water services that service the tower and also the main building right where the valet parking is. There is, those are somewhat dated. One failed and had a major leak in it last year. So the law school is going to abandon those services and prioritize and propose two new services to, to replace the intention to abandon existing services. That has nothing to do with anything else other than that longevity and the service type that serve, uh, those two existing services is, uh, we're having problems.
Thank you.
And is Robert Wood paying for it?
Yes.
Okay. And how would this affect Lincoln Attic were it to reopen?
Zero percent.
Did you get that, Mr. Cradell?
I did, yes.
Oh, you said zero, zero percent.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And does, does the last one need to tell me the names of the agents?
Any change in the names of the agents? Anybody have that?
It's Susan Malika from the mayor's office and Katie Purnella of Department of Planning, Community, and Economic Development.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We next have items up for discussion by the council.
Move the resolutions.
Oh, Ms. Moore, I'm sorry.
They need to vote on your resolutions, too.
Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
I had a question on twenty-four also. I didn't hear all of it. So you said that this water project for Robert Wood Johnson has nothing to do with making a decision with Lincoln Attic pool?
Right, that's correct. They already had a leak anyway, so they have to get one of them fixed no matter what.
And so, okay, because like you said, it looks a little suspicious to me. Wow, talking about selling a school and now enjoying the pipeline. It seems like, wow, like I said, you're stepping, you're stepping ahead.
Okay.
Like, okay, yeah, we, we have to do this due to what we know we're going to get the dirty. I just think there's nothing ahead.
Yeah.
Just out of all this time, we're just to do this now.
Okay, anything else?
That last question is for nineteen. That's the fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred seventy-four dollars for our parking thing.
What number?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
The uniforms for the different departments?
Is that what that's for, uniforms?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for her instance, was, was any of those new uniforms or what new set of gloves, new masks for the work worker?
Just for the work uniforms for the public works, water utility, public property, parks and shade trees, engineering, library, and the garage attendant for the police department.
Well, I think also to include is that where some of the workers should be provided with masks and extra gloves until with the coronavirus going on?
Okay, that one's not in this resolution, but I'm sure the departments are working on that and making sure people have the proper mask, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, I will get that into my comments due to where, for instance, with no cops with no masks or gloves on and they're out there working.
Okay, yes, please.
In which department.
Under the public comment would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
I would like to make one comment, please.
On which resolution? Who is this?
Who is this? The committee thirty-two, Wesley Drury?
Okay, what number?
Um, I'm going to follow up, I believe it's number nineteen, but I think I'll follow up on what Mr. Cradell said in regards to making decisions and making licensing changes before the board easier and costs more.
Right. Talking about site plans and fees. You had twenty and twenty-one you're talking about? Okay.
I think it's part of twenty and twenty-one.
Correct.
I'm a little confused with the idea that again, we're definitely fees. Um, we're asking to collect more money when in fact we shouldn't be still eager to pay fees with developers. In fact, now you're asking to pay for their fees, which I think colors this even more towards manipulation and discrediting. I also like the comments on the fact that it's pretty clear, Captain, you at the board don't care about the public comment. And then you've already decided and voted on the stuff in a secret back room, and then you're just paying list service and being condescending to the people that come to the meeting.
Well, I can assure you that we're not condescending to the people that come to the meeting. There's a lot of other people who don't come to the meeting who let us know about their opinions. But for some reason, they don't like to give it out of the air. As one person said, they don't like to be bullied after the meeting. Anything else?
Can we speak about what the fees that you're going to collect are going to pay for?
The necessary things for the, the site plan to go out, take care of everything.
Why is that a direct burden of the developer? Why didn't the city ask to collect fees about that in the first place?
Now, Mr. Dominguez, one try, please.
So these are fees, Mr. Chico, that, that the developer would now have to pay that right now charge costs no money. So right now, if the developer asks for a special meeting, if we can coordinate it, we might be able to fit in a special meeting. This ordinance would assess cost on their request for us to have a special meeting. That cost, in full transparency, we're recommending at fifteen hundred dollars. For the site plan waiver, we found that some other towns charge about a hundred and fifty dollars for a request of the site plan waiver from a developer. So right now, if a developer, you know, comes in for a sign variance, we may give them a site plan waiver, and that costs them nothing. So this would attach a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars for that request. And as for the driveway, going from twenty-five to fifty, driveways are some of the most onerous reviews that we do in terms of residential reviews due to the measure of the impervious surface and the different curves and how we have to work interdepartmentally with engineering on these reviews. And as such, fifty dollars more adequately reflects the accurate cost of actually processing the zoning permits for driveways.
Anything else?
Here again, you're collecting, you're collecting fees off the cost that you were already covering in other ways and kind of surplus. So why are we collecting fees? Why are you increasing fees on the address home owner to get their driveway paid? Why are you doing this?
Ma'am, I don't know where you've heard about this fourteen million dollar surplus, but it doesn't exist. I, I certainly didn't say it. Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Chico?
I'm really appalled by the type of behavior exhibited by this board, but, you know, that's it for tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move the resolutions. Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Supora Lovelue?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have items for discussion by council. We have a thing to let people know of some ideas that are going on. We'll do it first in English, and then we'll do, ask Councilwoman Escobar to do it in Spanish. We certainly hope everyone in attendance, whether in person or calling in, is doing well. We understand the trying times everyone is experiencing. The city has established several methods and venues for providing meaningful information regarding COVID-19 and its impacts on our residents and businesses. To obtain this helpful information regarding items like issues involving tenants and landlords, mortgages, business closing, employment options, unemployment benefits, social distancing requirements, and many other topics, would you please go to the city's website, cityofnewbrunswick.org? There are numerous articles published there that can provide timely information and answers to important questions. You will also find links to many county and state websites with current information, as well as a locally produced daily podcast with Spanish transcript that addresses COVID-19 related subjects. All the content on the city website is available to view and download in multiple languages, including Spanish. We encourage everyone participating in tonight's meeting to explore cityofnewbrunswick.org or visit the city's social media sites for information and regular updates. Councilwoman Escobar, please.
Buenas noches. Esperamos que todos estén bien. Todas las personas que están presentes y aquello que está en el teléfono. Entendemos que reconocemos los momentos difíciles que todos están atravesando. Por lo tanto, queremos dejar de saber informarles que la ciudad de New Brunswick establece los barrios sub métodos para proveer información significativa relacionado al COVID-19 y su impacto a nuestros residentes y negocios. Para obtener esta información útil y necesaria relacionadas a diversos temas como asuntos de arretataños y caseros, dueños de casa, hipotecas, seres de negocios, opciones de empleos, beneficios de desempleo, requisitos de distanciamiento social y otros temas. Les pedimos que por favor visiten el sitio web de la ciudad de New Brunswick, lo cual es cityofnewbrunswick.org, o eran. Y ahí podrán encontrar varios artículos publicados que son pertinentes y que les pueden dar información urgente y respuestas a algunas de sus preguntas. También pueden encontrar ahí, en el sitio web, enlaces a diferentes portales del fundado y del estado con información. En el sitio de la ciudad también pueden encontrar un podcast radial que conduce el alcalde James Kenyon todos los días, donde hablan de diferentes temas relacionados al COVID-19. Y esta información está disponible en español. Todo el contenido del sitio web de la ciudad está disponible para ver, descargar, si lo desean, información en múltiples idiomas, incluyendo obviamente, como ya mencioné, en español. Les optamos a todos los residentes, a los que están participando esta noche, a que visitan la página de la ciudad y, or cualquier otro tipo de medio social que utilizamos para que se mantengan informados y reciban actualizaciones regularmente sobre lo que está sucediendo en estos momentos durante esta pandemia del COVID-19. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd also like to remind people that our census is very important to count the human beings that are in. It makes no difference, again, a human being. It makes no difference whether you're documented, undocumented. Please take care of the census so we can basically get our financial aid, because it has to do with human beings that are there, so please make sure you do that. I'd also like people to watch what they're hoarding in these times. Watch what you're having in your house to give other people a chance. Speaking of your house, some of our police and firemen need to get to your house. Please make sure by ordinance that the number of your house is actually there so they can actually see it. As the governor indicated, there are medical professionals that are looking for volunteers. Also, continue to support your local restaurants if you can, either by takeout or by delivery, and that includes the businesses that are around town. In case you haven't heard, certainly the federal and state taxes that were due on April fifteenth don't have to be in until July fifteenth, but try to get them in as best you can, especially if you owe something. The ordinance side of the street parking that was supposed to take effect today has been suspended, but the street sweeper will still go out here and try to keep it clean. And if you possibly can, especially with all the vehicles being off the streets, if you can do that on the side of the street that your residence is on to get away from that, to take care of it, that would be a good idea. Again, a lot of these things are on the city website. The mayor is on the radio mostly every day. Eleven o'clock, Mr. Barron, eleven o'clock, take care of that. Newspapers, try to keep up on that. If you're not sure of something, definitely give the city a call so we can take care of that. Any other member have something? Egan, Ms. Moore? No? Okay. We're up to the public comments. Once again, we'll do the same thing. We're starting with the letter N. If you want to speak of the public comments, please just yell out your name as I get to the letter. And we're starting with the letter N this week. N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, A, B, C?
Charles Bergman.
Charles Bergman. B, C, D, E, F, G? Somebody there? F, G, H, I, J, K?
Charlie Cradell.
Okay, L, M?
Daniel Moore.
Ms. Moore? Anyone else we missed?
Yes, Eric Williams, E R I K, N U N O D.
Eric Williams.
I was just three, three, who got happening, probably in New Jersey. Your residents are always awake.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, first off, we have?
Council President, the first name on the list is Mr. Charles Bergman.
Mr. Bergman, you're ready to go.
Hello, Council, good evening. My address is one twenty-one Fulton Court in Brunswick. I was at work for Brunswick tomorrow, director of the Esperanza Neighborhood Project. And if you'll permit me, I'm going to, if possible, introduce and translate for two Spanish-speaking community members. Would that be okay?
Yes, you have up to five minutes, and if there's any correction, Councilwoman Escobar will let us know if there's any difference or not understanding something.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, I'll share my hand with Rosabel Basran.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosabel Basran. Soy madam de la comunidad de Esperanza, miembro de este proyecto. También soy embajadora de San Luis, que ahora es saludable, de su programa hostilizado con el bros y su honor. Provechiones son fácil y el respetamento de San Luis de Ingrid es con.
Good evening. I'm Rosabel Basran. I'm a duty ambassador and a member of the Esperanza Project, as well as a health ambassador with the Healthy Home Program sponsored by Brunswick Smalls, the hospitals, and, and Middlesex County Department of Health.
Nos gustaría compartir lo que hemos aprendido por el impacto del coronavirus y el quiebre conmigo de la comunidad invenante en New Brunswick.
So we'd like to share what we've learned about the impact of coronavirus and the economic shutdown on the immigrant community in Brunswick.
La última semana hemos llamado a casi doscientos contactos de nuestros programas y contestamos un funcionario prede por más de doscientos parejas personas.
So the last week, we called, reached almost six hundred contacts from our youth programs and completed a short survey with more than two hundred forty of them.
Al conversaciones y los resultados, como estas de nuestras familias están enfrentando situaciones muy difíciles y preocupantes.
So the conversations we had and the results of the survey showed that a lot of families are already fronting various difficult calls and worried about the situation.
Hemos compartido algunos de los datos más importantes.
So we wanted to share a few of the most impactful data points.
Por ejemplo, preguntamos si su trabajo y las situaciones económicas de sus familias han sido afectadas. El ochenta y dos por ciento dice que sí, el cuarenta y seis por ciento dice mucho, y el treinta y seis por ciento dice que no.
For example, we asked if their, their work in the opinion that not the situation had been affected, and eighty-two percent said that it had. Forty-six percent said it had a lot, and thirty-six percent said it had somewhat affected it.
También preguntamos si están afectadas, ha afectado su capacidad de pagar la renta. El treinta y cinco por ciento dijo que definitivamente, el cuarenta y cien, cuarenta y siete por ciento dijo que posiblemente, y el ochenta y tres por ciento en total.
So we also asked if their ability to pay the rents would be affected. Thirty-five percent said it definitely would, forty-seven percent said it probably would, for a total of eighty-three percent likely to be affected.
Anything else, then? Mr. Bergman?
Rosabel.
Good morning.
Okay, I think we might have a cluster, but if I can continue inside Milagro.
Yes, you have your second version? Yes.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Milagro. Soy embajadora de la comunidad de Esperanza, que la verdad es que la verdad es saludable. Aquí estoy, estoy en el último, pero... Aquí estoy en el asunto de la comunidad.
Good evening, I'm also a community ambassador with Healthy Homes and Esperanza Project and Actando de Esperanza Project.
Sí, y bueno, yo quiero compartir un poco de los resultados del cuestionario con el acceso de las comunidades.
So would you share a little bit the results from surveys about food gap?
El 79% de las personas que contestaron hacen todo para alimentarse a sí mismo y sus familias. Y el 59% dice que mucho, y el 50% dice algo, algo.
Seventy-nine percent of the people responded that they're worried about feeding themselves to their family. Twenty-nine percent said very concerned, fifty percent said somewhat concerned.
De las personas que están preocupados con falta de la comida, dijeron un 44% y dijeron que no saben dónde conseguir los recursos de comida de la comunidad. A ellos les compartimos la lista de los patricios, ¿no?, aceptados. Las personas estaban muy contentas porque algunas no sabían direcciones.
And some of those people who are worried about the lack of food, forty-four percent said that they were not sure where to find food resources in the community. Those folks, we share the updated food pantry information.
Y de las familias que tienen niños en las escuelas curitas en New Brunswick, el 55% de ellos están recogiendo la comida, o sentidos para el hospital.
And of families that have children in public schools, fifty-five percent of them, who are half, are picking up the food that the district is offering to park spaces.
Y voy a compartir un poco lo que me pensaron las personas al momento de que están recogiendo la comida. Bueno, un grupo que está recogiendo, el otro grupo no, porque tienen miedo salir debido a la pandemia, ¿no?, debido a la pandemia.
And would you share a little bit about why, what we heard from folks, those who are not picking up the food? Many are worried about going out, of course, due to the pandemic, worried about going into public spaces.
Y también quiero compartir un poco de las situaciones de cómo se sienten las personas, ¿no? Debido a esta pandemia del COVID-19. Cuando me han llamado, las personas se han sentido muy expectadas, con ansiedad, los niños también, con un paricón horrible. Tratamos de tranquilizarlas, de que todo está bien, a pesar de que se ve algo en esto, ¿no? Pero esto lo que pudimos ver es que estábamos dando recompensación de la, el número de las salas de tal, tanto para el papá y el hijo, y esto lo que dimos. Yo estamos compartimos estos datos porque es importante que todos se nos entiendan de las necesidades que existe en la comunidad. Y así poder trabajar juntos como ordenes, ¿no? Y que de la comunidad y de la ciudad para aceptar esta crisis, ¿no? Y podemos poder contar con tu apoyo, por favor. Muchas gracias por vuestra charla.
So I'd like to share, first a little bit about the impressions we're getting with the call families, that there is a lot of stress, who are very stressed, a lot of folks are in panic mode even, children, very stressed. We've always been sharing information about mental health hotline, mental health resources available, both adults and children. But people are definitely feeling that this is a very hard time emotionally as well as financially. And we're sharing, you know, the data and the results because it's important that we're all aware of the very urgency in the community so that we can really start to work as organizations, as community members in the city to confront this crisis the best we can. So we hope to be able to count worth of force, and thank you for listening.
Claro, no me extrema dificultad con, porque no sé qué hacer con el país, a todo la llamada de teléfono. Pero bueno, complacer aquí a la policía, es que el toque deshonorable que ella está.
You're fine, you did well, thank you very much.
Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
If I could make just a comment, if I just could make a comment, that reacting of the families that they have, they're reacting that all families are experiencing, there's no doubt that, there's not a single, even ourselves, there's not a single family or individual who is not affected by this pandemic. Usually, this event is even more stressful and more anxiety because of anxiety of families that are undocumented, that are not able to obtain some of the benefits that everybody else is able to obtain through this crisis. So a second opportunity for us to listen, as organizations, get together and address that to try to help what is going on and what could happen in our community. There have been some talks already of different organizations that are working on it, trying to address food insecurity within the families. Some organizations have started last week with some restaurants giving out a hot meal for our families in the city. Last week, I gave out, we gave out almost 200 meals, and yesterday, we gave 215 meals. And this effort was made possible by the generosity of one of the local restaurants who wanted to do this for the community. So it's just, and we're working on trying to do more of that. It's just a small token, but we are aware that everybody is going through some challenges and information has been given to the community, not only by Esperanza, but other groups. I know to the school system. Social workers are calling those families every day, two or three times, to the point that some of them are complaining that they're getting too many calls from the school system in terms of, you know, to help out, you know, ask questions about anxiety, homework, any assistance that they need. So I think that there's some efforts, but we need more in addition to this.
Quiero aclarar bien rápidamente que es una realidad que todo el mundo está pasando por estos momentos difíciles. Todas las familias, no hay un individuo o una familia que no lo esté, con estas preocupaciones debido a la pandemia. Estas cosas se ponen aún un poco más fuertes para nuestras familias que son indocumentadas ya que no son elegibles para algunos de los beneficios que hay disponibles bajo la orden de la directiva que se pasó hace poco. Por lo tanto, estamos conscientes de las necesidades, estamos conscientes de lo que tenemos. Gracias por esta información. Ya hay varios trabajando en ello a nivel pequeño, ¿no? Pero así comenzamos para tratar de lidiar con los problemas de seguridad de alimentos, al menos. Ya repartimos un informe seattle la semana pasada gracias a la velocidad de la multitud que estarán. Repartimos 200, más de 200 comunidades. Ayer repartimos más de 200 comunidades a las comunidades, familias. Así seguiremos, yo creo que ya hay otras organizaciones, incluyendo a la EMTI, que también está trabajando para ver cómo lidiamos y ayudar a las familias de ellos en estos momentos. Pero vuelvo y digo, no es fácil, y esto es solo el poco comienzo, pero estamos, por lo menos estamos dispuestos a trabajar en conjunto como comunidad para enfrentar esto. Gracias.
Thank you. Also on your rent, on your rent, anyone? Please make sure you do talk to your landlord. If you do get something pushing it off, please make sure you get it in writing. It is not, these banks are not automatic. It has to come from the federal government. So please don't think that you can just do it without talking to anybody. You have to talk to your bank, if it's with them, you have to talk to your landlord. So please be careful with that.
Al son de, las personas que tienen, que son arretadores, que se aseguren que tengan documentos cuando abren su, el casero, que lo tengan por equito todo lo que hacen. Toda esta información que se está hablando, la pueden conseguir en, lo que le dije anteriormente, en el sitio web de la ciudad. La granja puesta información que cubre todos esos temas. Si yo le, ella está en español, les recomiendo que vayan ahí para que puedan educar a otros también.
All that information that we're talking about, that we have said before, Mayor Kenyon has been putting in his podcast a lot of information related to all of this. So I urge you again to look into the City of New Brunswick website and look for that information, because even if you know it, you could just review it again and pass that information around to others in the community.
Thank you, Council. Next up, Annalise.
Council President, the next person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Mr. Cradville, you're up.
Yes, good evening once again, Mr. President, and I do want to thank you for the opportunity to address this unusual setting. May I ask, is the mayor on the call?
I do not know who's on the call, and I wouldn't give out names, except for those people who decided they wanted to speak.
So I guess the mayor continuing to introduce public and voice the public. Can you tell me how he declared a state of emergency for the city in his public?
I'm not sure, certainly has a website, does a lot of things on the website. Certainly he's on the radio, certainly he put things into the newspaper, so all those kind of things.
I'm sorry, was the answer, you're not sure if there's a state of emergency?
There's no statement. There's maybe a state, I don't know, but the city, you talk about the city?
Yes, I'm asking whether or not the mayor has declared a state of emergency or not.
Not to my knowledge. I think our people are doing really well. Anything else, Mr. Cradville?
Mr. President, quickly, why not, I didn't hear that.
I don't, no, I think our families, our people are doing really well. Not sure why he would at this point in time.
You're not sure why he would declare a state of emergency? At this point, we are practically under quarantine in the city. I mean, this is outrageous. The mayor's not really out here, but we can't even get a clear explanation why he hasn't declared a state of emergency. This is absurd.
He hasn't, it's a good decision or whatever, so it's a good decision.
In your opinion, do the hospitals here were adequately prepared for this type of pandemic?
I don't know what they're necessarily prepared for. I'm sure they're doing the best they can before, during, and after.
I don't doubt they're trying their best, but were they prepared is a different question. Maybe you could ask the emergency manager coordinator, he's available, he's on the call, Mr. Ross.
I think he is, he'll be making a statement after the public comment.
Okay, well, I hope he'll address the preparedness of our healthcare facility, because I think that there are lessons to be learned from this crisis. And we can do better, and we must do better if we're going to survive. I will point out that, you know, while the mayor, five days after I met him for not answering questions and not being public in the midst of this crisis, he did start doing some broadcasts on WCTC. I don't know the size of their audience, but I would reckon that we probably have a larger audience than in front of today of New Brunswick residents. And I'll just point out for the record, I did check my records, and the mayor's spokesperson, I asked him on October 3rd, I said I'd appreciate if you would include one of the listed reporters that received the city's official press meeting, to respond with, "I'll make sure this address is added." And I just want to be clear, did he ever send any releases? Does Mr. Baranville say anything to that question? Did he send any press releases to the reporter today?
I think at the last meeting, he also indicated that, that's not what he said, but Mr. Barron.
Thank you, yeah, good evening, Charles. Good evening, Charles, hope you're doing well. I know what we discussed this at the last meeting there, and I promised that I would look into the situation, and we addressed it last week. And anything that I post, whether it's on the city website or I share on social media, you and anyone else who shares information, you are more than welcome to take anything that is issued by the city and pass it along to your viewers and your subscribers. And you say that you have a large audience. Let's get the content in front of the people that are following your assets. You'd be doing the city a tremendous service, and it would be greatly appreciated by people.
And you sent out press releases, the other outlet, the NADA, you said you had discussions with staff, and you removed that from the list. Can you tell a quick chat?
Well, sure, let me say, I didn't remove you from the list. I inherited a list from which you were already removed. And I promised you that I would investigate as to why. And upon some discussions with some people who are making those decisions, the decision was made to not add you back to the list. That does not mean you cannot take the city's content. That doesn't mean that you cannot take the city's content and go ahead and share with your subscribers. It would be a great service to the city if you would do that, and I would appreciate it.
Well, I'll just remind you, your word for, "I'll make sure this address is added", and that is a promise that you've broken, you're reneging. Quite frankly, you know, dangerous for you to play favorites and not include us on your list of releases if, you know, if and when this emergency does become more severe. It's critical that we all get the information as quickly as possible, we can disseminate as quickly as possible, instead of having me, you know, check your Facebook page and copy and paste it. I think you know this pretty well, being in the broadcasting hall of fame. And I'm, you know, disappointed, and I think you should be, you know, ashamed to be, you know, show disrespect to another journalist, where at the end of the day, I have it on yet, and I want to share the information with the audience. I asked you one nice little thing, could you answer your question? You said yes, and then you came, and when you handle it, you're the first to know.
Okay, the time of the, the time has expired. The next person on the list.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Miss Moore, you are up next, Miss Moore.
Oh, I have to say, I'm also the president, and I'm very upset with you. But that is just, that is just an April fool's joke for Mr. Egan, just to get a good laugh with Mr. Egan.
Good job, thank you, I appreciate that. I know, I know I'm a...
Just a question, I have a few questions, and I will finish the last, when we begin voting. But yes, we think, even though I spoke to the mayor today, we just see the mayor now from the radio that at least 95% of the banks are closed down in Brunswick, and only banks with drive-throughs are available.
Yes, I think that's to prevent the one-on-one possible COVID-19, the virus. So basically, the idea is...
I'll say, I'm looking forward to the opening now, the state of the day for a lot of people to get their money, but I did speak to the mayor about that.
Okay.
And I would like to thank you and Mr. Ross and the Fire Department for you moving the fire on St. and Wall Street. Now, the open inside of the street parking cleaning, just because the city is beginning to, that means park authority and the police department are not allowed to give out any tickets.
Well, I would say not allowed, but at this point in time, they're not enforcing it and giving out any tickets at this time. But we do ask...
And how long for this, for the public to know when they will start giving out tickets or not?
We will put it out there so that everybody knows. But with all the vehicles being not around, it might be easier to let the sweeper go through and to clean up that mess, so as to basically keep down the COVID-19. So people don't have to go out into the street, as you know. People have to have, you know, two feet into the street, they have to clean it up. But picking it up and throwing it out, you know, that's probably a little dangerous also. So please use gloves or let the sweeper come through.
Okay, thank you. And then also, why have to throw some masks, which is provided to the police officers? And firemen, I think we don't seem done being prepared just before you know what several cases of have enjoyed the police officers, but even the teacher, we got the order, the teacher of positive, positive for the form of life here in Brunswick. Would I, I would like to hear from Mr. Ross how many cases are in here in this Brunswick?
And he'll do that at the end of the public comment there. I'm sure any police or fireman that wants them will get them. But Captain Miller, could you, do you want to talk about the police?
Hi, Miss Moore. Every police officer is equipped with a mask. We do have a limited supply, so the officers are using their discretion when they respond to different calls. If they feel they need it, they are putting it on. But they're practicing the social distancing with all their calls. So we have a limited supply, so they don't want to just use it 24/7 because they only, they have, each mask has a limited shelf life. If you wear it too long, you can...
They make you sweat, yeah, they make you sweat a lot. And then just two more things, I'll get to the voting part, and then, hello?
Yes, go ahead, Miss Moore.
Okay, that was where, about far with voting. Is this going to be mail-in vote? Another one thing?
It's something that they're working on. I guess the next one might be the board event. They have to make a determination to take care of all that, so the Board of Elections. Hopefully, make it easier with all mailing ballots. You know, anybody can certainly get a mail-in ballot now, but they're hoping to basically do that. It's obviously pushed off until May 12th, so we'll see what happens.
Well, then, then we go, if I may ask, would your permission just aware of what's next? May I advertise you on Facebook?
Anybody can follow me on Facebook.
I know, I'm just saying, explain the word to people where you, when it's time to vote for you. They just don't care if you ask me for your permission.
Absolutely, you got it, no problem at all.
I meant what I said, I said it was April Fool's joke, and I said I was angry with you, this is silly.
No problem.
And then the last part of that from Mr. Cradville, where he, did someone answer, please, what are, what is the help for homeless? Is the line of pop pot still serving food? What is protection for homeless?
Yes, they've cut down on their volunteers, but indeed, they're still serving meals.
They're serving, and they're over capacity with all the meals that they're serving. And what they, they still do in 500, just on the meals that they have more.
So if you'd like to help out too, they're looking for certain kinds of food. You could just drop that off, whether it be cheeses or something else like that. You can call them or you can check their website.
Well, I, I still have nothing donated to them.
No.
No, not, not their cookie, because although I totally trust you, we eat anything you make. We can't say that for everybody.
Oh, well, I saw my homemade sister, the homeless, and all over here at the park, and they like it. Like I said, my concern is, this is what I said, the homeless, just to whether, I just want that, said, I will help you. I do appreciate you for the police department over to the Walgreens park over that way. How they are making sure people are gathering around, like they know we do. But then, if there's a situation, where can the homeless go?
Yeah, it's not easy sometimes, but hopefully they're practicing their city distance also. Thank you for your time, Ms. Moore.
I do ask the police department really not to hat her ass to many homeless people in regards to, and have some stuff to go to.
Okay, I think they'll just basically tell them, six feet away, please. Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to walking around the city with you come time for election.
Okay, I'm still here, like I said, that was just a good laugh for you, for you and Mr. Egan.
Thank you very much. At this time, you...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, there's one more person on the list, that is Mr. Munoz.
Oh, Mr. Munoz, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Council. Again, my name is Eric Munoz. I am from the year organization called Shiloh. It's shot me supporting homeless, innovating, looking others. Again, my goal is improvement and advocacy. Again, it's a great bio, bio, soy grassers group, with many multi-relational cultural groups that find shelter for the homeless community, in the Brunswick, helping any homeless in Little Bay County and Jersey. I'd like to give another question for you guys. Is anyone currently wearing PPE in this meeting right now?
Yes.
What are you guys wearing?
Well, I see a mask out there, and I see people that are at least six feet away from you. Everybody, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there's 10 of us in the city council chambers.
Again, from different sources, in the future, they're going to be able to bring it up. They are saying that the spread of the virus, it helps outside when you're six feet away, but if you guys are in the same building, hopefully not in the same room. Let me speak basically in short and brief terms. You're spraying your own self spit, et cetera, on others. And if you don't know if you're contagious or if you actually have it, I obviously give that very term, because if you guys are currently with masks and that people, we're talking about the harm of other people that love it, but the decision by yourselves, they get by themselves. Because at the end of the day, you're elected officially, if something happens to you, what are we going to do? Currently, I have a partner, and my question, if you heard, our mayor, Mr. Ryan, he tested positive for coronavirus. We're not quite sure how he got it, but again, he's self-aware thinking right now. You know, again, there's a certain standard for there's Montalvo Diablo, or Diablo, which means the devil knows more because he's or not, because he's the devil, okay? Wisdom is very wide at this point, so I hope that you guys, you know, find a way to find PPE. Again, I'm currently dealing with a situation within, you know, our state. I see people mourning the PPE and trying to sell it for wholesale. You know, we hope that everybody could get some type of protocol. Again, as you can see within the city, it wasn't that hard to find commodities for the homeless. Everyone was sharing, everyone was able to provide for people who needed meals, and some people were able to find at least some type of shelter within the city. It's just that at the right now, we are in the city to open up more spaces, again, housing lots. There are all the buildings, they're empty. Remember when we had the hurricane situation that passed our state years ago? We had allowed the stadium of workers to open up, and again, I'm not quite sure who had the power that we need to do so. But, you know, even though we advise landlords to be lenient towards rents and people who are renting houses and mortgages, et cetera. But to be real, we're going to be seeing things serious consequences when it comes to this homeless situation. But the reality is, according to the highest health authority in Jersey, it's not a matter of how we're going to get supplies, but as it's win. Currently, you guys will not have PPE needed, also discipline, because your win is not. And I pray that you don't have it, because this is a, this is a different type of virus that we haven't seen before, that's being spread all over. We don't know really how long it extends in different areas, let alone in different environments and surfaces. This is the point now where we need to really take care of each other. And again, we do appreciate you guys leading, but maybe in different circumstances, you guys will come with maybe a vibe each other to not be in the same room, because that's still a very dangerous factor right now. You do understand that, even in a situation like Lakewood, or, you know, in a situation like Popolotnaya, they stop, they stop the PPE freely. So if you guys find a way to, right, if you guys find a way, the way they are, but in different types of circumstances, because at the right now, this is you, we're fine, we're home. You guys are willing to put yourselves out there for the risk of certainly being proposed. Things are a little bit, you know, not intuitive, if you don't mind me saying so. And since I was everybody, we have, that I thought was not, it's up to the office of the virus, they have to deal with that, and if there's anything we need to learn in the organization, again, you can always email me at munozmail@ayapo.com. And then I have to...
Quickly.
There, Charlie, they report, I have an individual that, not to say too much in grappido, he slides it through in a random place in the...
Yes, we have that. Thank you. Appreciate it. The time, the gentleman has expired, and we have found... Anybody else there? Thank you. Thank you very much for your concern. At this point in time, we have the Director Rawls here.
I'm here.
Okay, we have the Office of Emergency Management has some things to say. Director Rawls?
Sure, good evening. I would just like to, since the last two weeks, just go over some of the things that we've been doing in emergency management, and could jump in with some other agents. As of today, Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, three New Brunswick residents have tested positive for the COVID-19 emergency.
How many?
Sixty-three. The Middlesex County Health Department has been at the forefront of identifying people with contracted diseases. The city receives updates from the county once daily, and due to privacy restrictions, the county is limited in how much information they can share with city officials. The city, during this pandemic, has been on the forefront with all hands on deck. Our response has involved every department in the city. And as for the Office of Emergency Management, we have worked continuously with the state, county, and city officials to adapt to the changing emergencies and restrictions. Our social service department here in the city has been working to address the neediest members of our community. Our police department has modified their reporting procedures to ensure safety of the public and the officers during this time. Our fire department has been working with Robert Wood Thompson EMS to ensure that all ambulance calls are handled swiftly. The entire municipal workforce has adjusted to ensure safety while trying to maintain essential services. And we have met constantly, daily, seven days a week, often, and even Saturday and Sunday. And I have to give a shout out to our mayor and our city administration who have been right there on the forefront. In addition, we have been working with the New Brunswick Public Schools. The schools have been and will continue to provide millions to students during this time of extended closure. Information can be found on the school website. I believe there is tremendous coordination and cooperation by all those responding to this emergency. We are thankful to the vast majority of residents who are adhering to the governor's restrictions on social distancing and limiting travel. There will continue to be adjustments to our daily lives in the days to come, and we will keep you informed. We also continue to share information on Facebook, Twitter, and our city website, cityinnewbrundus.org. Mayor Kinnon will continue to provide radio updates, Monday through Friday, at 11:00 a.m. on 1450 AM WCTC. If the information is emergent in nature, we will also send out information via mail. The best thing anyone can do to help flatten the curve by restricting social distancing, washing your hands, and staying at home. So please stay safe, stay healthy, and patient during this difficult time. And we would also ask that you would please support our local restaurants. We are open for takeout and delivery. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rawls.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Post new jury.
Is there any ready to be run, even where?
See, second, second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President, Secora Legwick. Council President Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Please stay safe.